In accordance.
We lost your bet.
We lost you.
The appro-
I'll just make her to sign back on and bring her over.
Okay. Hi, are you hearing me?
You are, I am.
I apologize. Are you able to see me now?
We can see and we can hear you.
Okay, I. Ari, did you appoint enough?
We were waiting on you, Beth.
Thank you. Okay, now my headsets aren't connecting. Oh, it's just one thing after the next. Give me just a moment. Okay, apologies. I can't find my zoom, oh my goodness. Nobody. I don't see anybody. Are you hearing me?
Yes.
And we are, yeah.
Oh.
And we can see you.
Oh my goodness, okay, thank you. Twenty twenty two almost, here we are, okay. Should I begin again? I don't know what you heard, I apologize, my internet is not.
Yeah, I think you should start again, we didn't really hear anything from beginning.
Apologies, okay. In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, be advised that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in Town Hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers a list of the meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would take place on Wednesday, December fifteenth, twenty twenty one, at seven thirty PM via the Zoom virtual platform. Due to the COVID nineteen virus, Milburn Town Hall is closed to the public for the purposes of planning board meetings. The meeting notice contained information necessary for members of the public to attend the meeting through the Zoom platform, both by audio or video meets. The public will have the same opportunity to participate at the appropriate time virtually, just as if they were attending an in-person meeting. The notice was posted on the Milburn Township website, Milburn Town Hall Bulletin Board, and the Milburn Town Hall front door. Roll call.
Daniel Bear?
Here.
Gaston? Just lost them. Gaston? Jorge Mastro Pietro?
Yeah.
Maggie Miggins?
Here.
Joseph Steinberg? He's muted. There you go. You're here, Joe?
Here.
David Morrow?
Here.
Shreenie Vijay?
Here.
Chairwoman Bev Zoll.
I don't think Mark is here.
I'm here as well, thank you. Did you get everybody, Eileen? I'll give you a second.
Yeah, I think the only two we're missing are Mark and knew that Miriam and Sanji were not.
Great, thank you. Okay, so, thank you for bearing with us. We have a few things on our agenda tonight. We're going to begin with the approval or review of the minutes that we received from October twentieth, twenty twenty one. I noted one change that received was to add Dan Bear as a attendee, because he was present. Were there any other comments or changes or edits? And I will ask you to use the raise hand function, because I'm on my phone, so it's, I'm just kind of scanning, so I can't see as easily, but feel free to raise your hand, and if I'm not calling, then you speak up. Okay, great. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the minutes of October twentieth?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Aye.
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 And oppose? Joe, I think this was the one that you did not attend, so I think you would just abstain.
And miniature shopping lady.
I have, I was voting on this.
Okay, but I'm looking at the members present, and Joe is not voted there. Let's all move.
He's definitely here for, for the chase on Park Road. Was that the same night?
No.
Last meeting, he's at the last meeting.
No, we had a meeting on December first. Didn't we?
Yeah, I had, Jorge was absent, Heather.
Sorry, I'm hearing a bit of feedback, but this meeting, it listed Gaston, Jorge, Mark, Maggie, Sanji, Dave, Shreenie, we've added Dan Bear and myself, so that means Miriam and Joe were not listed as present. Joe, I know you missed.
You're here, where, I don't, where are you getting this from, though? The, what do you, the roll call, where are you reading that from?
At the beginning of the minutes of the October twentieth, twenty twenty one.
This was from December first, though. The resolution, is that what you're talking about?
We're, I'm still on the minutes, so. I, I'm trying to have us review the minutes from October twentieth. The ones that were sent out yesterday.
Yeah, yeah, I got a motion there. Joe would be recused.
Joe is recused, because Joe was not present, right?
Correct.
But then I thought, Eileen, you said that he voted on it, that's, I apologize if that confused me.
No, I, he voted on the resolution, I thought, that's what I was. I was a step ahead of you, sorry about that. I was on the resolution already.
Okay, so the minutes are good. Yes, we feel comfortable with those, Eileen?
Yeah, we're good, thank you.
Okay, now we can move on to the resolution, which we, we also received Monday, yesterday, yesterday, from. They came from Ed Bozek. And this is the resolution for the, the property subdivision. And I'm going to pull it open and read the proper number for the record. Okay. And that is here. Okay, application twenty one zero zero five. The most recent clean line version dated twelve fourteen twenty one was the one that was circulated, and this is the minor subdivision approval. So, thank you. So, Eileen, you were saying that, that Joe had voted on this, is that what you had been confirming?
Yes, the only, the only Jorge was absent, and Shreenie did not vote, everyone else is eligible.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Did anybody have corrections or changes to this? Maggie, that your hand's not upright, you just, no. Just wanted to. Okay, would anybody like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, okay, roll call, right?
I just asked, who was the second?
Shreenie.
I, I said.
Oh, no, Shreenie, I think didn't vote on this, right?
Oh, oh, right, sorry.
I can second.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
Gaston Helper?
Yes.
Maggie Miggins?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Yes.
David Morrow?
Yes.
That's all.
Yes. Great, thank you, this passes. That would be the memorialization of application twenty one zero zero five. Approved, thank you. Moving right along with our business, we have two revised ordinances before us that we received to discuss, they were, I guess we call it blacklined. And let's begin with twenty five ninety four dash twenty one. Otherwise referred to as the loading zones revised ordinance. So, I'll give everybody a second to, to pull that up, if you'd like. It's a minimal amount of revisions, but I think they were powerful in what they presented, which was looks to me, and this is as I sort of previewed at a prior meeting, taking into account some of our, the planning board's feedback on what was initially presented to us. Graham, I don't know if you want to further describe it, or any of the other
Yeah.
changing it?
Sure, yeah, I mean, happy to expand upon this a little bit, you know, as discussed previously here, on the first ordinance referral, the planning board feedback was that, you know, additional provisions for additional spaces should be considered in larger residential developments, so that, you know, feedback was, was well, well received, and we did incorporate those adjustments in coordination with Community of Vinayak, who is the sponsor of this ordinance introduction. So, just to advise, so, there were one, under the proposed ordinance, there's one loading space required for multifamily developments containing between five and seventy five dwelling units. For those dwelling in its, those developments containing more than seventy five dwelling units, two loading spaces are required, and an additional loading space is required for each fifty dwelling, it's additional, so a third space would be required at a hundred and twenty five units, a fourth at a hundred and seventy five, and so on and so forth. Happy to explain further, our consistency is largely the same, as we noted last time, you know, obviously the provision for providing off-street loading at multifamily residential developments will limit impacts to the public right-of-way, streetscape, and other things. So, the consistency report has not changed substantially, but happy to answer any questions that anyone may have, so thanks for your time.
Thank you, and I just want to add, ask one clarifying question, Graham, maybe for you, I probably will direct it towards Ed, our attorney, but Ed, my understanding, and just sort of for the record, is anything that has been approved by this board prior to the vote on and adoption of this ordinance by the TC, which is not happening by us tonight, but any, any future adoption of this is not a retroactive zoning change, is that correct?
It is not a retroactive change, when it is adopted, any application that is filed, a complete application that is filed, will be governed by this ordinance. If we have any pre-filled, complete applications, and I do not think we do, I don't think we have anything pending, if we did, even though we may not have heard the application, the ordinance would not be applicable to that particular development, but we don't have that situation here, I don't think, is that correct, Eileen?
Right.
The only other thing I want to add to, to supplement what I've just said, and the question that you had, Beth, is this ordinance will not apply to site-specific ordinances where there's specific loading requirements in that ordinance. So, you will recall that we reviewed the two affordable housing zone ordinances, the one for Annie Says, the one for the overlay zone for Woodmont, they have loading requirements within those specific zones. This ordinance would not be applicable to them. Because the ordinance, the site-specific ordinance, is the one that would apply, so I just wanted to make that clear to everyone, so there's no misunderstanding, thank you.
Yes, thanks for clarifying that. Does anybody else have comments or questions or concerns about the read of this ordinance? Okay, just scanning through, not seeing. Would anybody like to, so we, we don't make a motion to approve it, but we would make a motion to find it not inconsistent with the master plan, if that's what we felt, and indicate our support to the TC for moving forward with adopting this, as, as they've revised it. So, would anyone move to?
I, I will move to make a motion that is not inconsistent with the master plan.
Second.
Who seconded that, thank you.
If it was Dan.
Yeah.
Great.
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
Gaston Helper?
Yes.
Jorge Mastro Pietro?
Jorge dropped, I noticed, I think we're having internet issues tonight.
Maggie Miggins?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
He's, he's working on it.
Yes.
David Morrow?
Yes.
Shreenie Vijay?
Yes.
That's all.
Yes. Great, thank you all for review of ordinance, so we'll move on to the second ordinance, second revised ordinance, I should clarify, updated twenty five ninety five dash twenty one. This, actually, this is our first time seeing it at the planning board, if I'm correct, which is regarding rooftop decks as amenity spaces, and the underlined text that came in the six oh nine point thirteen is the proposed addition, which would be a prohibition of any and all rooftop amenity spaces in every zone, is how I read it. And I would ask you to clarify, is that superseded, as you stated, like in the last one, or is this a different animal?
Well, thi- this is, this is different.
Okay.
But, but the board should be aware that in each of those ordinances, to which I earlier referred, the affordable housing ordinances, there are no rooftop decks allowed, so actually, this, this is consistent with what was done in those ordinances.
Okay, thank you. So, Graham, you know, I don't believe we had a letter from you specifically with regard to consistency with the master plan, but as you had drafted this, I wonder if I could put you on the spot as our planner to, to speak to that a little bit?
Before, I'm sorry, there were a report, and I apologize that I thought it had been sent out, and it was not, but there was a so that's my apologies, they didn't get sent out as they were supposed to. But there's a very, he did prepare a brief report, so Graham, if you.
Great, Graham, if you'd like to share the content of your report with us.
Sure, sure, I'm happy to, happy to share that as well, so, first, I can kind of just describe the ordinance in detail for everyone, just so that, you know, there's some common understanding as we move forward. So, as noted by the chair and the brief introduction, the draft ordinance, as prepared and introduced before the TC, does prohibit the placement of what we're calling rooftop amenity space, which may include decks, platforms, terraces, or other similar features on the roof of a building for use as amenity space for building occupants and/or guests. However, for the purposes of this section, I did want to note that there is a small carve-out. So, a roof shall mean the exterior covering of a building that bridges the space between exterior walls. However, it does not include an interior courtyard area, or an area that's completely screened by the building, so should there be a lower-level interior courtyard that's completely screened by walls, not visible, a rooftop amenity space would be permitted in that location, on a lower level, such as within a contained courtyard space. Shifting over to the consistency memo that I have prepared on this ordinance, I just wanted to note that we did find that the township's plans and recommendations contained therein are supportive and consistent with this, with respect to a couple of things. Goal one, objective one point oh one of the township's master plan reexamination and update for the township of Milburn states that the intent of the master plan recommendations is to protect the character of established residential neighborhoods and encourage land use and development at an appropriate scale and density. We found that the proposed ordinance will prohibit installation of rooftop amenity space, and that this is consistent with the plan objective, as rooftop amenity spaces are not broadly present within the existing established residential neighborhoods. And in addition, development of new buildings should be appropriately scaled to existing residential neighborhoods. So, in that context, we find that the proposed ordinance to be consistent with the master plan. The second area where we found consistency is in the master plan recommendations, under the land use plan residential zone section. In evaluating the recommendations therein, the recommendations note that "to evaluate as necessary the effectiveness of existing land use regulations to ensure that new residential development in additions to existing homes are compatible with prevailing neighborhood context." We note that the proposed ordinance, you know, recommended, introduced here, will prohibit the installation of rooftop amenity space. This is consistent with this plan objective, as rooftop amenity spaces are not compatible nor prevailing feature of existing residential neighborhood contacts within the township of Milburn. So, those are our two findings, related to consistency with the existing master plan recommendations. Happy to answer any questions that anyone may have on that.
I have one quick question. I know it says rooftop, but do you define rooftop as sort of any uppermost level, like, so, for example, if it was a building with setbacks, is there no deck permitted on any height of a setback, or only the uppermost, you know, how are we defining roof? Do you understand the question I'm asking?
Yes, I understand the question you're asking, so as noted in the draft ordinance, there is this carve-out, so the last sentence of the ordinance reads, "for the purposes of this section, a roof shall mean the exterior covering of a building that bridges the space between exterior walls, but shall not include an interior courtyard area that is completely screened by exterior building walls." So, a roof level that is, you know, lower, or, you know, effectively screened by exterior walls or other elements could be supportive of a rooftop amenity space, but requires full screening of that element.
All right, so, so, just to take this a step further, for, for example, if there was an L-shaped building, so not a U or a C, or not, not a full screen effectively, anything on a sort of a terrace or intermediate mezzanine roof level would not be permitted, as it's not an interior courtyard, I, I guess, do you understand that question?
Yeah, I understand the question, yeah, I guess in that instance, the way that is currently drafted, that would not be permitted, correct?
Okay.
It's not completely screened.
Clarifying. Okay, Dan, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Beth. The way this ordinance is written, and I read, I read the planner's report most specifically relates to the consistency and effect and with residential character of the township, but it doesn't speak to the commercial character or maintaining vitality of the commercial areas in, in the township. We've created, the township committees created a blanket ordinance that would prohibit rooftop terraces, but this speaks specifically just to its effects on residential character, but we're, we're, we're removing the opportunity from the entire township. So, I, I don't necessarily agree with the planner's report and evaluation, because it speaks specifically to the effects on the residential character there, and does, and is silent with respect to goals in the master plan for maintaining and creating vitality in the downtown areas. So, I have a problem I, I, with, with the report, and I have a lot of questions about this ordinance with respect to how it was developed, what was, what was done, what was reviewed, what was taken into consideration, besides the Woodland Road situation, which I think was a very unique situation, where a rooftop deck did not fit into the environment of that development. It was adjacent to a sensitive environmental area. It was adjacent to a established residential area. So, I, I think besides the, my disagreement with the planner's report, I, I would like to know a little bit more about the thinking that went into the development of this ordinance, and why the ordinance itself is prohibiting rooftop decks from the entire township. When, when it was, from what I understand, unless there are other examples in the township, it was essentially based on one application, and the results of that application. So, I don't see Sanji here, Maggie, you're here, maybe you can help me a little bit in terms of understanding the evolution of this, what was taken into consideration? Because I have a little bit of a problem with respect to one, how it's written, because it's written directly to address the residential character, but we are prohibiting this opportunity from the entire township, we have industrial areas in town, in the sense, we have commercial areas in town that aren't necessarily adjacent to residential areas. So, but again, this speaks specifically to affecting residential character, and so did the planner's report, so, I don't know, Graham, if you want to go first, or Maggie, if you want to go, but maybe you could help me here in terms of understanding how this came to be, what kind of examples were used beyond Woodland Road, and what was the thinking in terms of creating a blanket prohibition for this type of use, as opposed to maybe not in residential areas, but conditionally, or through some type of variance action in other areas?
Okay, I don't know, Committeewoman Miggins, or if Graham, you'd like to. Either of you would like to give a, an initial go?
Take my hand down, sorry.
I can expand, just taking the first talk about this, so, this was discussed as a topic item at the November ninth meeting of the TC at length, the TC members, you know, we discussed the rooftop amenity space at that meeting during that time, and there was discussion by TC members that they were concerned about the presence of rooftop amenity space. And there was discussion by TC members that they were concerned about the presence of rooftop amenities space. And, you know, it felt that crafting some regulations to restrict them, not completely eliminate them as they're permitted in this interior courtyard configuration, but limit them from public visibility and from public impacts, you know, with respect to noise or other nuisance related impacts. So that that was the the impetus for crafting the ordinance and that's why it is structured the way it is. And largely the impacts that were discussed at the TC meeting were with respect to adjacent residential communities and neighborhoods. And that was the approach that we took in the consistency review as well. I think that that was kind of the the first look at that from the TC. I think that your points are well taken. You know, there are other contexts that may be important to evaluate. But but that was the initial direction that we that we heard at the TC and this this was a response, you know, to those concerns that we heard at that at that meeting.
And Graham, was there consideration of? And that was why I initially had asked the question, it's all zones. Was there consideration of specifying which zones this would apply in to to be the more residential focused as opposed to our our B zones? Okay.
Yeah, there was not a specific consideration of of specific zones.
Okay.
You know, in in other cases, you know, we have uses that are considered somewhat. I guess the word notch, this is not, but not appropriate, but problematic. And we have, we have zoning zoning regulations that prohibit them within a certain distance of a sensitive use or residential use in essence. We have uses up and down Morris Avenue and there are specific regulations within those zoning ordinances that prohibit noise from a rooftop, you know, air conditioner or from exhaust from that from whatever, within a certain distance of the residential areas. Now, I'm certainly under sensitive to the fact that with respect to a situation like Woodland Road, we were again adjacent to sensitive environmental areas, very established in some people think possibly historic areas and then, you know, I obviously established residential areas. But I think there are there are sections in town where a use like this could be controlled through conditions. And potentially it's in some of our, in some of the downtown areas that are not within a certain, you know, couple hundred feet from residential areas. So and this is something that has been established in many townships around us where bars and restaurants during the summer utilize rooftop spaces for additional eating areas and it drives economic vitality in the downtowns because they're able to serve more people, they can hire enough people to do that. So I I'm just a little concerned. I do see the need and and the and understand why we would look at this particularly in residential areas. But I have, I'm, I find it a little problematic that we are being a bit draconian in terms of its application to all areas in in the township, where I think that these things can be controlled through certain conditions. I have a problem with anything and if, you know, that comes up, that is a problem in one location, then becomes such a problem that you can't have it throughout the entire township. And that that unless I'm wrong, unless there's other examples that drove this decision, then I think that's that's a problem for me with respect to this ordinance.
Okay, thanks, Dan. I think that's good. And let's see if I see Jorge has his hand up. I'd like to just see if his comment or question is related and see if we can have more of a discussion.
It is related. Actually, everything that was done said is exactly what I think. But I want to say one more thing that I don't agree with you, Grant, and also because you are missing the master planning environmental goals, which is improve the quality of life of residents. So I understand that we need to protect the residents around that roof deck as Dan said, and we can do it with those distance setbacks, many things. But we also need to improve the quality of of life of people who live on those buildings. Then we have 90% of lot coverage, so they don't have any green space within the building. And those people who need to have, after we went through the COVID and we are still going through the COVID, people needs outdoor spaces. And the fact that we are eliminating an outdoor space, I think is against our our master plan. So we don't have to forget about the environment. This is one of the goals of our master plan, the environment for our master plan. And again, noise, we are replacing the noise of people that can be in a roof deck that we can regulate that for the noise of AC units, exhaust machines, many mechanical equipment that we are putting in the roof. So we are replacing one noise for another noise. So if we want to protect the residents around, there are other ways to do it. We we can say we can limit the space of the roof decks, let's say, like in many towns, 15% of the roof can be a roof deck. The rest, 85%, it has to be a green roof. So we are helping now to the environment because we are putting here a green roof. But in this case, we are eliminating everything, and I have to agree with them for one for one experience, which was bad. I vote against that at that moment. So it was bad, but we cannot use any professional planner to, we cannot use one bad example to ban for the whole town. That's it.
Okay, thank you to both Dan and Jorge. I want to allow any other members who either have additional comments, thoughts to have the opportunity to speak and apologize. I'm just kind of scrolling left and right here. Would anybody else like to just jump in and speak to any of their thoughts or responses?
Beth, I can speak. This is Maggie.
Great. Hey, Maggie.
Hi. There's many reasons why we want to ban these decks. First of all, as you all state, there are many towns. I don't know towns like our town that have them. I know city towns have them, Hoboken and Jersey City, and they're appropriate there. And they're appropriate down in Homestead on the Jersey Shore, but there's safety and there's privacy issues. And roof decks are noisy and can be noisy. We've had problems even in the summer with restaurants having music and people complaining because our downtown is not as large. So if you have, you could have a rooftop deck that people are partying on, that could affect people, say, in the Whitney Road section. If you're over by where the DPW site is, you could have a rooftop deck down. Maybe somebody wants to develop property by the Little Shop, right? And there's people that live in the South Mountain section that would be affected by noise and safety. So we believe that the Upton has done a very fine job. I don't know if any of you have made it up to the Upton, but they do have an area where they have amenities and it's set down. There's pool, there's there are fire pits, there's gathering spaces, and so it's set down rather than being on the top. And it's not just the Woodland Road project, which that's it. I can appreciate that because it is next to nature, but so is the Woodmont property, Dan, going to be next to nature as well. That's up on the up on, if that passes, that's up on JFK. So I think it's about the town keeping its suburban flavor rather than an urban flavor and the noise and the safety and privacy. So that's what it is about. And that's why we're asking for it to be approved. We're not, we're not an urban town. And I've had many, many, many of our constituents come to me and call me and email me and tell me that they just don't think it's appropriate for this town.
Okay, thank you, Maggie, for sharing. It's helpful to hear the context from.
Thank you.
From your perspective. Others. I think, yep, go ahead.
I have just a question. So if this ordinance does go into effect, people can apply for a variance for, for instance, in the in the B districts for a rooftop amenities deck or whatever they want. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that is the, I mean, yes, anybody could apply for a variance for any kind of use. I'll allow you.
Okay.
Keep going with your train of thought. Go ahead.
No, no, well, I was just wondering, so it I I I agree with actually everything that has been said. We want to, we want to keep it to a the the nice character. We don't want to disturb anybody. We want to be able to allow the downtown area to kind of progress, you know, and open up. If I I think it's kind of cool to have outdoor seating on top of one of the roofs. I can't imagine the view. I'd love to see it. So I I agree with that. And what are, so do we have any ordinances in place to actually limit the noise at this point? I know there's some there and we've heard them through different things, but have we really evaluated what the noise will be when we do have rooftop amenities downtown? Can anybody answer that or can anybody shed light on that? Maybe Graham? I don't know.
I don't know that we know the answer to that. Graham, is that something that was, has been, has come up either here or in other communities that you can speak?
Yeah, in other communities. I mean, typically noise enforcement is, you know, a police matter, you know, and it's there, the state laws surrounding noise are measured from property lines, certain decibel levels located at measured at a property line. You know, so that is something that's not necessarily contained within zoning. That would be an enforceable regulation within planning and zoning regulations that is located in other enforcement areas of the township. But but to follow up on your your prior question, which is related to, you know, permitting any of these rooftop amenities spaces, yes, that could be done through a variance relief process through an application to the board. And the other thing that I just wanted to mention, you know, as part of a variance relief request that enables a board to stipulate some conditions related to approving such a use, you know, regarding hours of operation, limits on occupancy or other things. It can be part of any condition of approving a rooftop amenities space.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Can I say something else?
Go ahead, Jorge. Go ahead and Dan.
Yeah, I needed to answer Maggie. My, I understand the position of the TC. But I'm not thinking about this as an urban town. We have in Summit that are buildings with, they have roof deck in many suburban, many suburban towns that are roof decks. And I'm sorry, but safety is not an, it's a reason. Safety is very easy to fix it. So I don't understand why I heard about the DC meeting that they were talking about safety and I said, why we are talking about safety, safety is away. There is nothing about safety. We can regulate about how to avoid any any hazard situation on that. Privacy, we can regulate privacy. We can regulate noise. Doesn't mean that doing that, again, the roof is the fifth facade today. Everything, buildings are being seen from the top because we have drones, we have planes. The the roof is the facade and we are making a roof, a black membrane that it looks bad. It's bad for the over town inclusive because we are not doing this and said, no roof deck, but yes to a green roof, yes to other things. We are just saying, no, that's my concern. And I don't know, it's just, I I'm not thinking about urban towns. I'm thinking about suburban towns.
Jorge, I can appreciate that. Can you hear me?
Yep.
I can, Maggie. And what I wanted to say is in Summit, I do know the rooftop deck is on a bank that isn't open at nighttime. And that's a commercial space, but the downtown of Summit is a lot larger than the downtown of Milburn. And so it's, you will have a noise factor that will get carried. So I I understand that. I shop in Summit, I shop in Milburn, so I get that. But it's it's, they're two different towns. They're two different communities. And there can be a safety issue. There's, I think, 300 people trapped right now in a rooftop over in Korea right now, trapped with a fire. So there can be safety issues.
Okay.
Just, I.
Go ahead, Dan. Nope.
I think the last thing you want to do is create a situation where we have to approve things through variances. And in create situations where things are prohibited and the only way we can have them is through variance actions. I think that's one thing that we're trying to get away from. I'm not, I'm not sure that's the direction we want to go. And I think that this creates a, again, I'll use the term precedent for other things that may happen in this town. So I think that that this can be dealt with with a little bit of thinking. Again, I think I agree in the residential areas that I would, I would certainly support the notion of no rooftop decks and probably even go some somewhat further, no decks on, you know, the front and things like that. We started to see some residential buildings that actually have, you know, patios and rooftop decks on the front of their homes. That maybe, you know, some people would think that's problematic and it probably is in this town. But to take this opportunity away from the business district, I think that there are some controls that can be incorporated into this. If we think hard enough and we look at examples in suburban towns surrounding us, which do have top decks, because I've seen them, that we can come up with a better ordinance that I that I think I could support. I just, again, I think that we're being a bit draconian in terms of creating a blanket prohibition for rooftop decks. I think we can be a little bit smarter about this. So I, and I hopefully we can consider that.
I think we also need to consider, we're putting almost 300 rental units into the downtown. That's a lot of people. That's a lot of people, 300 units right into our downtown. So I think you have to think about the noise issue there as well. And people that live there. Well, you're putting 300, we'll be putting almost 300 rental units. That doesn't include all these other building owners that are putting four units on top of their buildings or coming forward to wanting to do that. You're going to have a lot of people living in that downtown area. And so I think that you have to be cognizant of the noise and these decks. And so that was part of it as well. I mean, that's a lot of people.
You're right, Maggie. And in hopefully those residential buildings will be designed in such a way and use certain amenities and architectural resources to drown out noise. And that's typically how residential buildings are designed today. They use special windows. Then they're going to be, you know, you potentially could have them up against the Morrison Essex line too. So you're, we're going to have to take great care in designing these buildings so that noises, the noises is mitigated, noise issues are mitigated. So so I and I I think that that what we're saying is is that I think with a little thinking that there are some opportunities where these things could, and maybe there are controls that are put in where we prohibit certain types of uses on the deck, you know, music or whatever. But I think we're taking away from opportunities to create additional economic vitality for the downtown, which downtown, which we all know has basically been recycling stores for years. And maybe here's an opportunity where we could provide a little bit of economic vitality and a little bit of assistance in terms of of helping these businesses maintain some some level of existence. I'm saying this, I think that that to do, again, to create a blanket ordinance is, to me, is problematic because I do believe that this is basically based on one, one, one application.
Just to correct you, it's not based on just one application, Dan, just so you know that.
Okay, well, I'm Maggie, I'm happy to hear what other applications went in. And that was my original question to you is what other?
Dan, I think she referenced the two, she referenced both the Chatham, Woodland and Woodmont, both.
I'm sorry, the what? Beth?
The Woodmont up on JFK. All right, Maggie, can you speak if I'm not coming through?
You're coming through. No, we do, I'm, what Beth was saying that I also mentioned the Woodmont property as well. There's the units that are going into the downtown. There's a lot of stuff going on. So that's, we're comfortable with it, Dan.
Okay, so I I think, thank you, Maggie, for clarifying. So I heard, you know, we've heard, I think Jorge and Gaston and Dan have shared some helpful concerns, perspectives. You know, Maggie has shared some of, not just her own personal, but, you know, as as the representative to our board from the TC, sharing some of the thought that went behind it. Graham has put in, I'd love to hear from others. I think, you know, we have, we, this is certainly we're not voting on it tonight. Again, we are, we as the planning board, you know, are charged as always with review of ordinances is to is to be. is to is to be cognizant of how this speaks to our master plan and our goals and which which in my perspective include, yes, maintaining the character and residence, you know, residential zones, needing to be sure that those don't turn into, you know, loud, noisy gathering places where, you know, a quiet suburban, you know, cul-de-sac formerly was. And we understand the sensitivity of that. That came forth through one of our applications. That was a was a big highlight and a big eye opener, I think, to to many of us. But also, yes, our downtown is is going to be growing for a variety of different reasons for because there are development opportunities, because developers are seeking to to create opportunities, because we're being informed that we're going to be developing. But our our master plan calls for development in the downtown. It calls for a rich, vibrant downtown. And so part of that is providing living spaces for the people who are living in the downtown. So so you can live, work and play, you know, kind of that 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 trifecta. So I like us on, I think I hear both sides. And my personal opinion is that I do think this is impactful in in a in a bit of a heavy hand. I I do not, I I'm not sure that this should be the across the top, you know, for all zones. I do think we should be mindful of how this is going to impact respective zones in which it in which it would be in imposed.
If I may, if I may.
Go ahead. Is that David, is that you?
Yep, that's me.
Great.
Yeah, I agree with both Jorge and and Dan. I think that you know, Maggie is correct, this is a suburban town, but we are also a transit community. You know, our downtown town center has never reached the the kind of vitality I think that everybody, you know, would hope for it. And I think, you know, to limit the outdoor space, the amenity space, the rooftop space for the entire township without dealing with the commercial district as a separate area, I think might be a mistake. So I think we may need to rethink how we treat this ordinance before memorializing it.
Thanks, David. I think that was, I think that was well said, and I think it's it's sort of sensitive to both sides, which which I think we're all trying to be mindful of. Other thoughts? Please go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, guys. So, you know, I'm with Gaston on this. I think both Maggie and Dan and we've added points. You know, like me, like a lot of people in town, I visit this Melbourne Standard quite often, and I think they do a fantastic job in maintaining the decibel levels out there. To the extent you can sort of use that as, you know, for a rooftop, I don't know how it's possible, but I think, you know, they do a phenomenal job. I've never, I've been there at all times of the night and, you know, the the decibel levels are pretty low there. But I just want to, you know, ask Dan a question, you know, he brought up a suggestion that maybe we can come up with a creative solution. So who would who would come up with the solution? Is it us or is it the TC?
I I don't know that's a question necessarily for Dan, but I I think yeah, we as the planning board have the ability, which we have done in the past, of stating whether or not we feel that that an ordinance that has come to us is consistent or not inconsistent with the master plan. And we also, Eileen prepares a memorandum, you know, and maybe a couple of sentences or maybe a little bit more to say here might be why we don't agree with it, you know, as if we're saying that we don't think it's consistent with the master plan. We like to, you know, further expound upon that and offer some suggestions. Just otherwise, you're going back and saying, no, we don't like it, you know, it doesn't work. So so we like to give that context and then that would give the planner and, you know, we're lucky that Graham is having the benefit of hearing it firsthand to hear our our discussion and our our collective thoughts. And it would be to the planners, the professional planner, which is Graham and his firm to redraft potentially before sending it to us. Or and Ed, correct me if I'm wrong here, the TC could move forward with it as as they drafted it, if they prefer, if they, you know, feel that this is in the best interest of the community. Is that accurate?
Let me, if I can speak to that, there's there's three things that we we do as the planning board when ordinances refer to us. One of them has been mentioned several times, which is the primary one. Determine whether the there's any inconsistency between the ordinance and the master plan. Doesn't the ordinance does not have to be consistent with the master plan. So therefore you don't have to find things in the master plan that is that are or is consistent with the ordinance. You just have to find there's nothing in the master plan inconsistent that effectively undermines the terms of the ordinance. The second thing is that if you do find inconsistencies, you can make recommendations as to how to mitigate those inconsistencies. The third thing is to do any essentially anything else, says in any other matters that the planning board may want. This discussion that we're having about the propriety of this or tweaking it or so forth, that comes under that third category. The third, the third category where where recommendations may be made has a little bit more weight before the township committee. Because the if the township committee does not follow a recommendation that is made by the planning board, they have to set forth the reasons why they are not following that recommendation. So there there's a a process where the recommendation, and I stress the word recommendation, has to be seriously considered by the township committee. And and not that they would not seriously consider it, but there's a protocol that's set up in the law. So just to jump to sort of the end of the the discussion here, and then I want to go back to one other thing. I would recommend that the the board bifurcate or trifurcate in these determinations. I think I think we should look first to the inconsistency issue and make a determination as to whether the ordinance is inconsistent. I think there appears to be consensus, although I don't know that and I'm not predicting where where the board will go. But I think we should handle that first. If there's no inconsistencies, if that's what the majority of the board determines, then we skip the second one because the second prong is to address or make recommendations to address those inconsistencies. And then we move to the third prong. And that one, I think, should be separate because I'm not sure there's consensus. I don't know, you know, where we're going to come out on a majority vote. So I think we should do that separately. And then Eileen can incorporate either three things or two things into the memorandum that that is done. The only other thing I wanted to to mention is I've heard 85 Woodland mentioned a few times with regard to the rooftop deck. And all of you will know, I think all of you, yes, all of you are on the board. I think Graham may have been the only one who was not involved in that application. The issue of rooftop deck was a was a major I major component of that and a major source of great controversy with the public. But just to remind everyone that at the 11th and three quarter hour, the the applicant withdrew that rooftop deck. So 85 Woodland Road does not have a rooftop deck and and it's the rooftop deck that is as defined in this ordinance, that is not a deck that is surrounded by building. You will recall in that application was a a true rooftop deck. And then there was a an interior courtyard deck, which was surrounded on three sides with the building. That remains and that remained in the application and the resolution the board approved. But the rooftop deck, the true rooftop deck at the high level that was not surrounded by a building was withdrawn by the app. So just to remind everybody, it that certainly prompted much discussion. It it's, I think, part of the genesis of this discussion here. But at the end of the day, there is no rooftop deck on that application. Third thing I just wanted to mention was that I think Gaston had asked about a variance. And the answer was, yes, you can apply for variance and and that's that's absolutely true. However, the the application would not be made to this board. In my view, that would be considered a use variance. And this board does not have jurisdiction over use variance. It's going to use the roof for a deck, for an amenity deck. I think that would come under a use category as opposed to a bulk category. And they would have to go to the Board of Adjustment to obtain a use variance to build a deck. The bar that has to be met, the bar for the level of fruits that has to be met for use variance are significantly higher than the bar that has to be met for bulk variances, which are handled by the planning board or effectively non-use variances. So anyway, I just wanted to cover all those topics to get the board an understanding of where we are. I'm going to pass it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ed. Yeah, I appreciate that. So I think in light of in light of the the way you tripled, broke it out there. It sounds like your recommendation would be for if we feel like we're at the point of of a of a consensus or of a feeling confident in our viewpoints for somebody to make a motion to state whether we feel it's consistent with the master plan or inconsistent with the master plan as an initial step. Now, typically, Ed, I just want to say, should we think that the proposed ordinance is not inconsistent with the master plan? Like, maybe there's nothing in it that we feel, you know, the master plan says there should be, you know, it's it's there's nothing, you know, in our master plan that says we need rooftops, you know, all of that. Clearly, you know, this is this is not in opposition to to something physically stated. Now, we have heard some conversation, you know, some examples from from Jorge and and Dan, I think, how they might say that what this proposes may not be consistent. I think we we're not quite there in terms of moving forward. But if we say it's not inconsistent, could we still move on to the part three, which is maybe it's not inconsistent, but we we don't feel it's a strong ordinance because of XYZ?
Yes, that is correct. You you can't do, you can't do item two because item two only comes into effect if you find that it's inconsistent.
Right, right, right. Say like pointing out how, right, okay. So so that said, I guess, why open it up to anybody who would like to speak? But Jorge, I think you sort of came at it, pointing to certain elements of our master plan that you felt you disagreed either with how Graham characterized it or you just felt that they were not consistent or if I'm putting words into your mouth, I apologize, I don't want to do that.
I feel that the I feel and I also think Dan said said something similar. But in my case, I feel that is inconsistent with the master plan environmental goals.
Okay. Dan, did you want to clarify sort of where where you're at? With respect to the master?
I'm actually going to ask counsel to clarify it because so what are we, what are we substantially consistent or substantially inconsistent or partially consistent or partially inconsistent? I mean, I again, I I look at this as I think there's some power behind this ordinance. And I think there's some good behind this ordinance with respect to residential zones. And I do agree with that. But what I think is the problem is is that we're just taking that step a little bit too far. And we need to take a look at other zones outside of the residential zones and see if there's ways that that this could be applied through conditions. So I I and I don't know how you vote on this because, yeah, it's consistent with some with with some of the stuff Graham brought up in his report. But it's inconsistent with, I believe, with the goal associated with you know, driving the vitality in the downtown.
Well, if if you think that it's inconsistent with with that goal, which is an aspect of the master plan, I think that that would be one, one of perhaps others. But that would be one of the basis upon which you would find that the the ordinance is inconsistent with that section of the master plan. And if there's other sections that it is inconsistent with, then I think you can you can add to that.
Okay. I mean, echoing what Dan is saying, you know, I I am in agreement. I think Dan may be going to pull out the master plan to 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 cite specific sections. But I do think, you know, my personal take is is that there this is a a good ordinance and a necessary ordinance, but not for every zone. It is sort of my personal opinion. So Ed, I don't know how to how to vote that because I do think what it says for certain elements.
I think you'd handle it in two ways and and it, I think it depends upon the fervor of the position that the board, the the majority of the board wants to convey. You can find that is not inconsistent with the master plan. And then, as I said on the third prong, make the recommendation, it's not, it's it's not inconsistent with the master plan. But as you, again, just using your example, Madam Chair, but that we think that it's it's overbearing, it's overbroad and whatnot to include all of the zones for the reasons, for example, that Dan gave or or Jorge gave. On the other hand, you can elevate that, I think, that it it is not consistent with the master plan because it does not advance this goal. So that's not a recommendation, that's a determination of the board that it's it's not that it is not consistent with the master plan. And the difference between those two, and again, you know, I I don't mean to split hairs, but the law does split hairs, is that if the determination is made that is it is not consistent with the master plan, again, the township committee can still adopt the ordinance as it is. But in addition to putting in the in the minutes why they're acting on an ordinance that the planning board has found is not consistent with the master plan, they have to adopt a separate resolution setting that forth as well. So if you're looking at it on a hierarchy, making a determination that an ordinance is not consistent with the master plan, that's a more significant determination than one that's where you find that the ordinance is not inconsistent with it, but there's recommendations to be made because the township committee reacts differently. In one case, they adopt the resolution, in another case, they just have to explain what they're doing. In the law, that's those are different levels, you know, a higher level, obviously, they have to adopt the resolution. As a chip, they put making a determination as related to the master plan and you know, the the governing body is supposed to be guided by the master plan. They don't necessarily have to have to introduce ordinances or adopt ordinances that advance that. But the point is, if they do not, this board says the ordinance does not, it is not consistent with the mass master plan, then they have to explain themselves in a resolution. So everything hopefully fits together.
Great. One member of the board who we haven't heard from, who is probably the most knowledgeable about our town's zoning. So I I would like to hear from you if you have anything, you know, additional to share. I I can't make you speak, but I may regret asking you to go off mute here. There we go.
Well, I have to say that I'm in agreement with Dan Bear. I think this ordinance, I don't have the master plan in front of me. So I can't point to a sentence in the master plan that I think this ordinance is proposed ordinance is inconsistent with. But I do feel that look, the 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 opportunity to to come before the zoning board to seek a variance, a use variance is available to anyone. It's available to a owner of a building or a business in the downtown area who feels that the ordinance prohibiting rooftop decks is too broad and impinges on the ability of this individual to make a living. Consistent, looking at it the other way around, someone can go before someone can go before the zoning board as an objector and say that, let's say the ordinance passes in its present form. And someone can say, well, this guy wants to put a, or I'm sorry, I'm backwards. Let's say that the ordinance passes excluding certain districts or zones from its reach. Then an individual can say, I'm coming to the zoning board to seek, to stop someone in the downtown area from doing something which I think is going to be harmful to me or to my family. Frankly, if I had to put the onus on someone, it would be to put the onus on the business owner. I'm sorry, but I put the onus on the individual in, in, who lives near a business. I think that I would be in favor of Dan Bear's view that there is, there are ways that perhaps this ordinance can be changed. And in, in a way that, I mean, there, there are a couple of ways to do it. You can say the ordinance does not apply at all to the business districts. Or you can say that it's a blanket ordinance that involves the entire town. But, and then you can insert protections in the ordinance itself. I think I'm inclined to agree with Dan Bear that there are two different types of properties in this town. There are the residential properties, in residential zones that are entitled to protection. And I would not want to see those people who live in those areas forced to go to the zoning board to stop what, what, what we think would be inhumane to those districts. So to the people who live in those districts. So my view would be that I think this board should find that the ordinance is inconsistent with the master plan in that the master plan does talk about the vitality of the downtown areas, the non-residential areas. And let the board decide, determine, the township committee determine do we re, redo, pass the ordinance as it is? And as Ed Bullock pointed out, they can do that. They just have to do it in a certain way. Or will the township committee say, no, we're very much concerned with what the planning board said. And therefore, we want to either A, pass the ordinance and exclude the downtown non-residential districts. Or alternatively, we want to include in the ordinance provisions that will make it very, very clear that we're protecting the homeowners and the people who live near the downtown area, but in the residential districts. So I would, I would leave it up to the township committee to determine which way they want to go. But as far as I'm concerned, I think that I would be in favor of this board voting to determine that this ordinance is inconsistent with the master plan. And let the township committee figure out how to deal with it.
Thanks, Joe, and I, I appreciate, I appreciate your thoughtful feedback. Cool. Speaking of feedback, can you mute?
I'm going to mute, yeah. I don't know what.
It's okay. Thank you. Okay. I think that was helpful. I think he kind of contextualized it. I know we're kind of, we're talking around the same thing at this point. So I, I love us to move forward, but I, I don't want to cut anybody off if anybody additionally wanted an opportunity to speak. And so I think we have enough kind of thoughtful feedback that we, echoing what Joe said, but just moving us towards a, a potential motion. I think what we're hearing is that we, the planning board, some members of the planning board will, will vote, we're going to, everybody gets a vote, feel that the ordinance as drafted now is inconsistent with the master plan with respect to the master plan's call for vitality in our downtown. I don't have the specific reference. Do we need to find that in order to make a determination?
No, I, I think, I think just mentioning the, the section generically is, is sufficient.
Right, with our, with our goals and objectives. Thank you. Yeah, it's with our, with our goals with respect to the downtown. And I, I don't know how we feel as a board with respect to the environmental issues that Jorge raised. But I think if we, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think I would, I would be comfortable making a motion. I would like to make a motion to state that the ordinance as written, I move to state it inconsistent with the master plan with respect to meeting objectives of creating and supporting a vital downtown.
If I could just, for the benefit of the board, just note which goals those are for you, if you would like. So it's goal number four of the master plan reexam report, which states maintain and enhance economic vitality of the downtown and other business districts.
Thank you.
And then the sustainability goal is goal number six, which reads develop and implement strategies to address townwide sustainability, resiliency, and to adapt to climate change. Just wanted to share those, those numberings for you.
Thank you. I think I'm speaking mostly with respect to number four, based on the dialogue tonight. But thank you. So does anybody want to second my motion?
I second that.
Okay. I mean?
Daniel Bear?
Yes.
Gaston Halper?
Yes.
Jorge Mastro Pietro?
Yes.
Maggie Miggins?
No.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
David Morrow? David Morrow?
Yes.
Trini VJ?
Yes.
That's all.
Yes. Okay. So that's, that's part one. Part two, I think, did we give you enough, Eileen, context to be able to summarize? And Ed, is that, am I doing this correctly in the correct order? We, we decided we have a determination of not consistent, so now we need to rationalize why?
That's, that's correct. And how, how it could be mitigated? And for example, you know, there were comments, different alternatives of effectively allowing them in the downtown area, not in, in other residential areas. I mean, if, if we come to some consensus with that, that would be helpful because that would then handle a second prong.
Yep. I think what I, I'll start with a summary and, and allow people to chime in beyond. I believe what we feel is that this is absolutely appropriate in residential-only neighborhoods, especially residential neighborhoods, you know, not, not immediately adjacent to any of the, the downtowns. But as we get to the, the downtowns, which is both the proper downtown Melbourne and also Short Hills, potentially, you know, Melbourne Avenue towards Springfield. And I think we, and, and other areas, you know, we have, as mentioned, non-residential neighborhood within the town. We may want to, we would like to see this ordinance revisited. Not to say it's not possible at all, but to be mindful to, to look. Maybe there's a, a certain percentage, a setback, a different ways to treat it so that it is appropriate for different zones. Is that what people feel is appropriate feedback? Seeing some nods, but if you want to.
The setback percentage of roof, it doesn't have to be 100% of the roof, it has to be a roof deck. Yes, I totally agree with you, Ben.
Okay, thanks. So, so those are, those are points for consideration by the TC that, that we would like them to ta, to take a look at and with their, their planning, planners' support as well. And Ed, do we don't need, do we don't need to vote on that?
Yes, you do. You do because, again, it's got to be a recommendation of the board, not of individual members or thoughts of individual members. We have to reach out consensus in the board.
Thank you. Okay. So, Eileen, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I, have you taken down some of these notes? And could you read it back that we could take a vote on it?
Um, allow, oh, what did I, I can read my own handwriting. Like to see ordinance revisited for conditions that could be entered, enforced in business zones. Allow, could be mitigated by allowing this in the downtown area, appropriate in residential neighborhoods, but not in downtown area or commercial loans.
Great. Yep. And I would, I was just start saying the, the board is, agrees that this is appropriate as written in the residential zone. Like, you know, no changes to, to the, the residential zones. But let's think about the, the non-residential zones with, you know, with a, a little bit closer. Yeah, with, with the, the items as you discussed. Okay, so.
Beth, if, if I may add one, one more, just to, so if it could address both the noise pollution and light pollution. I think those are very specific to the residents around because otherwise you don't see them, you don't hear them, it doesn't matter. And if the ordinance could address those two, I would feel much more comfortable with it.
Thanks, Gaston. I think that's a good add.
And also, I think for what Mike said before, safety, safety is something that we can address in the ordinance. Like having setbacks, not having the roof deck right next to the, the, the full height of the building. So there are ways to, to, to regulate that safety, safety issues.
Absolutely. But no, that's great. Safety. And also, I mean, obviously, you know, being mindful to neighborhood character and whatever that neighborhood it's in. So I, I do agree. Yeah. Okay. So Ed, I apologize, but we would have to make a motion to include everything that
That is correct.
I mean, just sort of read.
That's correct. And what Jorge added and Gaston added, you know, put them all together and see if we can get a consensus on it.
Okay. Does anyone want to move to, to approve those recommendations from the board?
I move to approve the recommendation from the board.
Second. Does anybody want a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Daniel Bear? Gaston Halper?
Yes.
Jorge Mastro Pietro?
Yes.
Maggie Miggins?
Abstain.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
David Morrow?
Yes.
Trini VJ?
Yes.
That's all.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. That was an effort, but we made it through. And as, before we conclude, which I think we're about to do, I just wanted to take a quick moment. This was a weird year. This is a weird meeting. I'm literally sitting on my bed because I have to charge the phone that I'm on for this. It's just, this is so 2021. I want to thank you all for rising to the occasion, for serving on this board that we never got to sit on that whole board together. We have some members who will not be returning next year. But it has been my pleasure, despite all odds, to get through this and muddle our way. Thank you all for your patience and standing by our side and showing up month after month. We made it this far to healthier, safer, you know, 2022, we can only hope. It can only get better from here.
We said the same.
So thank you for, yeah.
At the end of 2020, you said exactly the same. We hope 2021 will be different.
Here we are. With that, would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn for the evening and the year?
Were we, were we not going to do something with that? Were we moving that to January? The, um, the land, the Park Road piece?
Oh, the memorial, the memorialization on that?
Did I miss that in the beginning?
We did it. And maybe I'm, yeah. Yeah, I was like, it's totally possible. I forgot. No, we, we, we moved that memorialization. Thank you for checking. So we're okay to adjourn, if, if you're okay to adjourn. I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone. Good night, everyone. Have a nice holiday. Appreciate you next year.
Happy holidays.
Good night.